More minutes, two and a half.
Oh, yeah.
Clock's fast.
That clock is fast.
Yeah.
Seven and a half.
Okay, it's seven.
That one.
It's seven, it's time.
Yeah.
Okay. This is the Enfield Planning Board, April thirteenth. Uh, the date is wrong.
I got the wrong.
It is not two oh two three two. That sounds like somebody's.
Oh, yes, it's base age.
Um, so anyhow, it is the Enfield Planning Board, April thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. We are in the DPW Conference Room and also on Microsoft Teams. Uh, it is seven oh one now, about seven o'clock still, so I am calling the meeting to order. And members present from my left.
Dan Kylie.
Kate Stewart.
Okay, go ahead.
Kate Stewart.
I'm David Frack.
I'm Bill Vermeer.
Craig Carhartt.
And Linda Jones.
Okay, Jim, I'm gonna elevate you to a voting member tonight because we are missing Eric. And that's it.
Yep.
Uh, also in attendance, Town Manager Ed Morris, Land Use and Economic Development Administrator Rob Taylor, and Nicole Seitz, who is here for the conceptual. Um. I don't see anybody from the public, anybody on the virtual land.
Just Linda.
Okay, uh, Select Board Report, Kate.
The Select Board met on April fourth. We started off with two public hearings in succession on bonds or notes over a hundred thousand dollars. One was Whitney Hall renovation and expansion, and one was the public safety facility, lots of great questions. I, anybody who didn't get a chance to see that meeting, instead of me telling you about it, you really should go on the YouTube page for Enfield and watch it. It was very worthwhile, great presentations, thanks to Ed. Um, we moved along, we, um, looked at, let's see, the firefighters. We had a presentation, and this is going to be in new practice. I think it's a very good one of recognizing them when they complete a certification level. So Ed has instituted that, and I think it's been, um, a longstanding interest in this town to continue to move them forward in how we operate. So that was very exciting. We had some grants, we talked about Moose Plate, uh, Gopher Funding Request. Uh, we got some money somewhere along the way, which I can't.
Yeah, we got the, this one was water. We talked about wastewater last time, but we got water funding. So we got an ARPA grant, and I'm not gonna remember the numbers, but out of our one point nine million dollar water fund, forty percent of it's gonna be grant funded.
So. And we are now doing policy review, uh, meetings regularly to go over previously existing policies or refine them to either current standards, current law, or, you know, make them just apply better. So to that end, we looked at the release of information policy. That one was fine, we reaffirmed it. The formal complaint policy is new but not new, it is a revised name. Um, and a little easier to understand, and there is a form that goes with it, uh, that Ed kindly redid for us. So those both were reviewed and voted on and passed.
Good, anything else? Any questions for Kate? Okay. Um, we are going to table the review of the March twenty-third minutes because Whitney had a baby, she's not here, no minutes. So with the agreement of the board, that's what we'll do.
Wait a minute, I have, I have minutes for that meeting.
So do I.
Oh, you do?
You guys don't have the minutes, we just don't have her to take notes when you guys wanna give changes. So we thought we'd double up.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Sorry about that. Um, at our most recent previous meeting, I had floated the suggestion that the Planning Board, um, draft a response to those individuals that were the driving force behind the opposition to the Article Four, the Village Alternative. Um, that draft went back and forth and around, and everybody on the board seemed to agree with it. And then Ed weighed in, and he brought up some, I thought, very reasonable points in terms of the time lag between when this little thifflow was running rampant around the town and the time that the letter would actually be sent, and he had a few other points. And based on that discussion, the letter was not sent. And I invited Ed to come to this meeting and reiterate his points to the entire board. Um, he has told me, and I believe this is still his opinion, is that, um, after hearing him out, if we would like to send, uh, the letter, it would not overrule us. So Ed, I'll turn it over to you and let you tell the board, um, your, your thoughts on this.
Yeah, as I, you know, it came across my desk, and I took a, a couple of days to, to think about it as it was bouncing back and forth. And I had talked to David prior to the vote when everything was steaming up, and we, I'm gonna say we, David, brought it to my attention at least that, you know, we had adopted the enabling legislation. We hadn't actually created and adopted a village plan. And I had mentioned at that time, I thought it might be good if we wanted to, to quell some of the discussion, to send a letter to those three that were really behind it, stating that this is what we saw, and, you know, maybe we could have a discussion after we vote this to see if we wanted to reenact some sort of village plan that actually did work. Um, we went through the vote, it was after you guys had your meeting, and I just thought the, the time lag, everything had subsided. And unless you were writing a letter to state, hey, we wanna get with you and work on what a village plan would look like, I thought it was more kicking the hornet's nest at this point than it was solving a problem. And, you know, it would just reinvigorate that discussion. And so I talked to David a little bit and just wanted to, wanted to air my, my thoughts and my concerns. I told him, when I, when I get that little red flag that stands up going, is this a good idea or not? I'm going to communicate that. But, you know, this is the Planning Board, the Planning Board's letter and their decision. So if they do wanna send it, um, you can send your letter. But I, I just had some concerns with it that I thought it would cause more trouble than it would actually help, and.
Yeah, I, you know, two, two weeks ago, when you and I spoke, uh, I guess we talked a couple of times that day, didn't we?
We talked a few times that day.
Um, I basically said, hey, you've got some valid points, and I, I think, you know, we probably missed the boat on that one in terms of the timing. So, um, if the board feels differently, we can certainly take a vote, uh, if people think that we should just drop it. Um, so be it. Kate?
I think the timing lag is a really good point. I, I do wanna say that I think in honor of the very good discussion we all had together, I think it was a good exercise to have that kind of conversation and go through that, and that we should preserve the document because you may find the elements apply later if you decide to go through the process and be inviting. So it certainly was a good conversation for us to all have, so I'm thankful that you all put that time in. But I think at this point, I would be in favor of, of not sending a letter anymore.
Dan?
Yeah, I, I didn't, I didn't personally see the need for the letter before, so I obviously don't see the need part now.
Okay. Phil?
Um, the time is all, uh, past. No, no sense in kicking the hornet's nest again.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Dan, I, I mean, the discussion should have been had prior to the town votes, um, when it was a planning board discussion, or, and they had the opportunity, like, some of them showed up and, um, discussed it, but gave their point, but it was already on the ballot, so, at that point, so.
At, at that point, we didn't have all the facts.
Right.
Or at least, if we had them, we didn't understand what they meant.
Yeah.
Um, Jim, do you wanna weigh in?
I don't, I think the time is past, we take any action about.
Linda?
I, I concur with the rest of you. I think the thinking we did was, and your research was very good, um, and we should just keep that for when we're addressing this again.
Okay, um, that was pretty easy, issue solved. And I can assure everybody that all of the drafts that I did, uh, will be on my file server at home, and Rob and Ed have drafts, and everybody does. So I think if and when the issue comes up again, which it probably will, uh, we will be ready. So, thanks for coming in and voicing your opinion, and you're certainly welcome to say for the rest of the meeting. Okay, next, um, we have no warned hearings. And Nicole, we have a conceptual from you on your bog road project. So come up and sit next to Ed. Um, I think everybody remembers Nicole from last summer, was it?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yeah, yeah.
What, we did a site visit, and, um, tell us what's going on now.
Yeah, so just two quick things, um, one of them is, um, that reclamation plan that we had come up with, um, you know, I know when I did the special exception, I had gotten, you know, a signed newspaper that says, you know, it's approved, whatever. Um, and so I had talked to Rob and said, hey, you know, can we do something like that for the reclamation plan? And he had said, well, you know, check the meeting minutes and see if it comes up there. And in the minutes, it had specifically said, like, nothing is passed, nothing is set in stone. Um, so I just wanted to request, you know, something in writing that says, this, this, and this needs to be done by this date, and it's, you know, passed by the, by the Planning Board, um, just to have it, you know, in my files and stuff, so that everything is all official and good to go. Um, and then I also have the site plan review for the commercial equine operation. Um, and I can get, cause it's, it's a major site plan review, and so that entails, you know, an engineered site plan map. Um, and, but there is also a piece of writing in there that says that you can get, you can request waivers for certain aspects of the review. I think I can get all of the information that's needed onto a detailed site sketch. I don't think that, you know, the full engineered map is totally necessary. So I wanted to raise that to you guys and, um, see what everybody else thinks and see what we should do for that.
Okay, um, you're correcting your thinking that it is a major and that you can request waivers. Um, so if I can rephrase, you are suggesting that you would like to ask for waiver of the engineers or surveyors drawing, but you would include all of the information on a reasonably to scale sketch? Am I understanding correctly?
Yeah.
And how many acres are involved?
Uh, probably about the, you know, fourteen or fifteen that are cleared for the gravel pit, and really only two or three. There's only the barn going up and a three-sided running shed. Those are the only buildings going up. The rest of it is just, you know, there'll be fencing out to the back of what's currently cleared. Um, but there's not gonna be any other buildings or anything.
Any issues with water or drainage or?
No, no, it's been, I mean, there's some, there's some water that kind of ponds just because it's low in there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but there's a lot of regrading that's gonna happen with the reclamation plan anyways. So, you know, we're certainly gonna go through and just regrade anything that's ponding to the point where it's gonna be detrimental, you know?
Kurt?
Um, what, what is the size of the, the total parcel size acreage?
Uh, I think, I think I have about twenty cleared. I think there was fourteen acres cleared originally, and I cleared another five about. But a lot of that will just be, you know, fenced in for pasture.
Yeah, I'm just wanna, because without actually having a list of waivers requested, it's hard to say agree to or not agree to.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
Um, now, a lot of times when someone's doing a small section of a large parcel, we'll waive the full perimeter, like, it hasn't been served, the whole lot hasn't been served a since like the forties.
Yeah, cause.
Something.
I have, I have a certain.
Ten acres out of a hundred acre yard, we'll say, well, yeah.
Yeah, cause the, the whole lot is ninety acres.
Okay.
Um, so, and like, I do have a perimeter survey from like two thousand five that I could include, um.
Yeah, that would be.
Rock, you may have, um, there in team, so Linda can see it too, please.
And when you're doing the reclamation, you're gonna need, get something showing what was done for that.
Right.
Like the square footage of the area that was reclaimed, so there's gonna be some paperwork submitted just for that alone.
Mm-hmm.
But like I said, without having a list of, going through the checklist and saying, request waiver, request waiver, submitted, submitted type of thing, it's sort of hard to know.
Right.
What we're gonna say. Except for me, anyways.
Anybody else have thoughts, Dan?
Yeah, I, I agree with Kurt, the biggest thing here is gonna be the reclamation plan.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the, that's the overriding issue anyways. Because before we can do anything, there has to be a reclamation plan.
I could, want me to go make some copies? This is what she provided us.
Yeah, I know.
Want me to get some copies for this? You guys like to see that?
Sure. But I mean, I guess the reclamation plan is the big piece here.
Yeah, it is.
Right, yeah.
Definitely is.
This is her reclamation plan.
I mean, you gotta be utilizing outside of that area, that's all.
Not aside from, like, having trails and stuff.
Right, yeah, you know, those structures or.
No, no, there'll be a, a house up where the old, uh, mobile home was, but that's not relevant for any of this.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's really, you know, it's just the one barn and one three-sided shed. So, you know, it's not like it's a housing development or a shopping mall or something where all of the factors of that full engineered map are gonna be really necessary. You know, it's, by the time we're done reclaiming it, it's gonna be pretty much a flat site. It's away from the wetlands, you know, there's really nothing.
That would be.
There's nothing remarkable about it.
I mean, if your reclamation, reclamation plan shows where the wet ones are and the, uh, or at least that there's none in that area.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's well away from.
Yeah, there's one brook isn't there that runs?
Yeah, there's a brook that runs through, yeah, but it's, it's away from anywhere that they were again.
Along the enfield line, all, they let, the enfield, uh, part of the parcel, there's one brook that runs through there, and I think there's a well also up on the other side.
Whereabouts?
They run water, I think he ran water to the, um, mobile home.
Yeah, so there's a well, um, near the, near that creek, yeah.
Right.
Any thoughts, Phil?
Nope, just, uh, I'm, I'm all for as many waivers as she has she can get.
Okay? Kate, any thoughts?
Cause it's pretty straightforward, I mean.
Yeah, I'm a super visual person, so I think just having that visual in there written will help me a lot. Um, I certainly, I own a firm, so I certainly understand kind of what you're trying to do, and I, I, I have no problem with looking at it.
Linda, any thoughts? Can't hear you, you are muted.
She might be muted on this end.
No, I did it, um, it sounds good to me.
Okay, um, I would say that, um, you know, obviously, we're gonna look at what you're asking the waivers on, but, um, you know, I think you can make an assumption from the comments tonight that you are likely to receive most, if not all, of the waivers that you are going to ask for.
Great, yeah, that's all, you know, I just wanted to see if it was worth submitting that written request and.
It's, it's always worth a shot, and, you know, to have to hire an engineer to draw out the entire ninety-one acres or however many you have when you're gonna just be concentrating on a small percentage of that, and all you're doing is putting up, uh, a barn and a three-sided shed of some sort. Um, it, it certainly would be, I think, counterproductive of the board to require a full engineering study for something that is basically gonna be in a, you know, natural state after it's reclaimed, so. I think you're good to go.
Excellent.
And, um, you know, pull your drawings together, and we'll see you in a month or two months.
Hopefully, um, I have to, I have to get, um, some more stumps and stuff out before I can shoot for the septic. So that's what's, that's what's holding me up right now, and we're waiting for the roads to not be posted, so.
If you need to work on that, to get something done before, the Town Manager and Marv are both resources for you because it's not that you can't possibly, it's that they need to know and need to be able to make some decisions to help your contractors out. So if it's the posting, let's check in with these guys.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Get, get with Rob, cause he'll be able to tell you which waivers you can get from what you need.
Mm-hmm.
Did you guys already discuss the, uh?
Yeah.
Point in here? Yeah, we, we've decided that the reclamation plan is really the major thing that we're concerned about, and.
Yeah, and that'll, that'll be moving forward, you know, that'll, I'm doing that with the site work for, for the house and the barn. So that'll all get rolling here shortly.
Okay.
But, yeah, just, you know, something in writing that says, this, this, and this needs to be done, needs to be completed by this date, just so that everybody's on the same page, would be, would be lovely.
So would you like that notation, um, to be done in conjunction with the site plan review or before?
Um, before would be ideal.
Okay, um.
I'll put it on the next meeting agenda?
Next, next meeting would be good, yeah.
Yeah.
It holds a public hearing, can you make the next meeting, which is two weeks from tonight?
I, I mean, well.
I believe so, yeah.
Right, cause we have the phase one or preliminary, or I forget what it's actually called in the regs, but this, for a major, this, you can do several stages before you get to your final. So you can come in for one and say, here's the ones, waivers I'm requesting, and, you know, we either say yes or no on all or some, and the ones that you do, don't, do not get a waiver for, then you go to your engineers or wherever you need to, say, okay, this is what I need to go, to go forward.
Okay.
So you don't come in with all this stuff and then turn around and say, oh, I need more stuff.
Right.
So, yeah.
If they did a formal hearing, though, we would most likely have to do it in May because we're two weeks out from the next meeting here, that's, we have three weeks, lead time at least.
So first meeting in May?
Yeah, so come, uh.
Okay.
Come in and see me, we'll work up an application.
Yeah, okay, sounds good.
Okay, all right.
So that's May eleventh.
May eleventh, okay.
Yep. Sounds good.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks for coming in.
Yeah.
Thank you, good luck, see ya.
All right, um, master plan. Uh, we continue to make very good progress on the master plan. Um, we had focus groups, which divided the task force with a lot of really good feedback. Um, the group has gone through two of the four chapters and given our, um, input based on the focus groups. We've debated some things back and forth and handed them off to Brandy. Um, the next, or the final two chapters will be done, uh, two weeks from this past Monday, which is the week of town meeting. Um, my expectation is that somebody, either Lindsay or myself or both of us, will be giving a presentation at the town meeting. Uh, time, place on the agenda, et cetera, et cetera, is still to be determined. Um, since the Planning Board is ultimately responsible for the master plan, I wanted to have this group, um, take a look at the drafts as they exist, which basically is the same draft that the focus groups worked on. Um, number one, I know a lot of people on this, uh, planning board have either been part of the master plan task force or have participated in at least one of the focus group. But I wanted people to have a chance to look at all the chapters, just so you can put things in perspective. And I want people to be familiar with what it is because I'm sure at town meeting or after town meeting, there might be some people that are interested and, uh, will have questions. And being on the planning board, they just might come to us. So I asked Rob to distribute PDFs of what is essentially the first draft. And I thought, uh, tonight, since we had a light agenda, we would go over the first draft. And this review is not for spelling and grammar and punctuation and all that editorial type stuff. It's a kind of a five-thousand-foot view. Uh, it's in phone, it's for content, it's for, did we leave something out? Did we miss something? Did we make something up that, you know, the town just is not gonna go along with? Um, so that's, that's kind of what I'd like to accomplish tonight. Um, please understand that this is the first draft, and we are halfway through revising it. So there will be changes, and if comments that are made tonight are uh, parallel with or duplicate of comments that we have already passed on to Brandy, uh, in the interest of saving time, I think I will just say we have addressed this and we'll move on to the next.
Okay.
Um, as the, as the revisions become available, I am gonna ask Rob to send them out to us. So there will be one set of revisions of two chapters that should be coming out, what, this week, do you think, Rob, or?
Possibly, yeah.
Possibly this week. And if we are extremely lucky, we'll get, uh, a second set just before town meeting. But that will be a gift because, just because of the timing of everything. So, that having been said, um, my proposal is that we kind of go through it page by page, chapter by chapter. And I will try to take some notes, and we'll just kind of go around the table if anybody has any comments. So starting off with the vision statement, um, we have seven guiding principles. So, anybody have any thoughts?
I mean, I can't even get to the guiding principles, this is how my brain works. Because I can't get past the fact that the focal point of this page is on Lebanon. I can't get past the fact that the focal point of this page is on Lebanon. So, you have to understand that some of those things for us, people who are very visual like me, that's a roadblock, right, your eyes are drawn. I am not in love with some of the way the language is worded, and so I have read through the guiding principles, it was, it was kind of painful for me. Um, the repetition, and so I don't know if we can get some difference.
I don't like the vision statement.
I, yeah.
Okay, so.
I'm sorry.
Starts off, Enfield will be welcoming community, does that mean we're not a welcoming community today?
These will be's are.
You do a vision statement.
That, that has been a matter of discussion.
Okay.
I had our statement last January, you know, they talked about livability. Sent that to you, Rob.
I mean, I see Enfield as a place where you become, where. You move in and you become neighbors and your neighbors become your friends and eventually they become your family. And sometimes you bicker with them, but we're not gonna put that in there, but I think there's a better way to say this. Without saying will be, will be, will be, it feels very much like aspirational and not visionary, I guess, that's my issue. And I just got really stuck on this page and.
I think, you know, from sitting next to Brandy when that came up in a couple of other meetings. She as a planner, so thi- this is a plan. So we're actually trying to focus on what, what, what is our plan for the future, not what we're doing now. What are we going to do, that's why the will be's are in there.
Well, I guess my, I, I, I understand that, but as far as I'm concerned. That first thing should be Enfield is.
I, I agree, I agree.
If you wanna have, will offer a high quality of life and a location without parallel, that's okay, but. To jump off the first thing that should be whi- is. That's what you are and this is what we're going to plan, what this is, the is is what we are today. The plan is for the future, I agree, but don't say that we will be welcoming because that means we're not now.
You're a hundred percent correct, Dana.
And this is, I understand it's a form of technical writing, but the people who will largely consume this document. Are not consumers of technical writing, and I understand that because I also struggle with it because I write a lot of technical pieces. Um, we need it to be user friendly and we went into this talking about, you know, cutting across silos and making it a little bit more available. As a tool, so I just want to make sure we're making it into the tool we've talked about.
Point made and taken and I think, you know, agreed with.
Right.
I mean, it, it seems pretty unanimous amongst the planning board that. Nobody is really happy with the way the initial.
No.
And it did, it did come up in the master planning task force, the same discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say, I, I've listened to those meetings, I didn't listen to this Mondays yet, but it will be and um. I would agree with one comment that that vision statement seems a little long.
Yeah.
You know, I don't think it needs to be one sentence, like some people think, but it does seem to ramble on and on. But I think a little bit more concise of a vision statement, not that we couldn't. Move some of those other comments down somewhere else in the text, but the statement should be catchy and really quick and easy to read.
Yeah.
Yep, I mean, delete the second paragraph or take that.
Yeah.
Theme and put it in the bottom half somewhere. Take that concept of what's there and just infill it in the uh, the bullet points.
Yeah.
What, whatever this is, it has to align with whatever we're going to bring into this town.
Say, instead of getting into a long debate, I do like, I would change the wording slightly, but the. That Enfield will offer a high quality of life, I think that, that section of that. I believe needs to be in the vision statement, maybe Enfield will continue to offer a high quality of life and.
Or get rid of the, get rid of the will.
Merging those two together in a little bit more concise way.
Mm-hmm.
Could be a stronger statement. Uh, you're right, because I'm not big in starting a paragraph with by. By pro tactic. Yeah, and I don't know the vision statement needs to list.
Right.
Rural character, natural resources, unique heritage, we can go into that later of what are. The, what are the.
Yeah.
You know, what are we valuing here, come later in the narrative? Because that may change and your vision statement could still.
Yeah.
Remain.
Yep. And the pictures will change throughout the document. Um, I, I think, I think. In the focus groups, we have pointed out all of the inappropriate images.
Like the Baltic Mill, I hope.
Like the Baltic Mill.
Thank you, because if that's economic development, we got a big issue.
I think the other.
It's aspirational.
I don't even, yeah, we can't even best stretch. I think um, we need to somehow also honor whoever took these pictures and make sure this is. This is a formal document, like they need citations.
Yeah.
I, I'm very deeply uncomfortable across the board with lack, lack of citations and cross references, um.
On the pictures, the uh, unless someone knows. Unless I'm completely missing it, I don't think Enfield has a covered bridge.
That's the Packard covered bridge in Lebanon.
Yeah, that's what I thought, so.
I would rather see the Shaker Bridge, but.
Yeah, well, that's, that's been considered.
Yeah.
Um.
So this raises a good point, I think, we, we don't really have. Like a central repository cited and, and.
I know how to make one.
So, yeah, so it would be awesome if we had a really awesome photographer. Send him out when it gets pretty again, because it's not there yet.
Alyssa has a fabulous trove though of different town pictures, so. Maybe pulling, I'm not saying she has to do it, but. I think any, you would probably need to get permission again because they were offered for a specific project.
Right.
But maybe making a call so that this document becomes a document, right, because now you're like, oh, my picture's in there, maybe I'll read it.
Right.
Aspirational thinking at its best.
You referring to the calendar photos?
Yeah.
I believe there was a statement when those come out that they've become.
They are the property of the town. But.
But if you're gonna show someone a specific building or house, um, you probably should get.
Approval.
We've, we approved that you can use it again.
She's still giving notice of who took the pictures, though.
Yeah.
You don't have to get their permission.
And I.
No, no, but you could cite who, who took the.
Yeah, I mean, a, a photo credit is, is common and, you know, if, if I have my druthers. There will be an identification of what it is that you're looking at and photo by.
Yeah.
Whomever.
One thing I would like to do, and it's run it by powers that be here. Is uh, aerial, I'd like to do some aerial drones as soon as it gets pretty, spring, summer. Uh, because the aerial shots that a drone can get make it look spectacular.
Ask um, Mary from the skating association, she's the queen of. She's still, took all the trail pictures.
Okay, because in Plainfield, we just did our website over and we did all brand new aerial photography from Will Doherty. And it is spectacular, I mean, it like, you're like looking at it like, where did this come from, and it's pretty amazing. Um, I will say to your point about looking off in the direction of Lebanon. We have the same problem in Plainfield where a lot of our really cool pictures are views of Mount Ascot. Um, I would say the same is true here, there's spots where we have unbelievable views of Mount Cardigan. From up on Lock Haven Road looking down in a way, so that's not necessarily a bad thing, the views that we have here.
I think it was just more that, so I, I don't mind as much in the background, I was more concerned about the fact that, I would say, a good section of the land in this photo is actually.
Yeah, the view down the lake from Shaker Bridge.
Right, yeah, and I know what it is. I don't know.
Turn around and go put.
Turn around, go the other direction.
Yeah.
It's not as spectacular, but it's.
It's nice with her again, so if we could just get the bald eagle lined up. He was out today.
He was out today.
He's in trouble.
Over in uh.
He's not too smart.
No. Back in his corner, he was sitting on a dead tree today, just sitting there cleaning his talons.
Okay, moving along, uh.
Let's go to the seven.
Let's, let's, let's go to the, let's just briefly touch on the guiding principles, I mean. I know that we don't wanna say Enfield will be, we wanna do Enfield is.
Yeah.
But in terms of the principles, is there any disagreement with any of the seven that are listed? And are we missing any that should be included?
Why are they in this order, do we have a reason?
Uh, I don't know why, why they're in this order.
I, I, because I think order does matter, there's. In the middle of the sandwich is the stuff that.
Yeah.
So I guess I would reorder them as my biggest comment, I think the topics are germane, I feel strongly they need to be reordered, so I'm not gonna offer.
Right, like three should be one.
Yeah, yeah, um.
Um, I got, I'm starting up on four because. After I, when I initially read it, I got to the point where it says. Um, it's rural character, blah, blah, and then twenty first century and I, my eyes just skipped over the technology.
Yeah.
For it, I just saw twenty first century and then kept reading. And it was like, bing, bing, wait a minute.
Yeah.
I think of rural cap- twenty four, coming, bringing it into the twenty first century means we're kind of getting out of the muds, out of the mud, type of thing. Um, all the roads are gonna be paved, uh, everybody's gonna have a streetlights, everybody's gonna have high speed internet. And, which would be nice, but.
Why did you say streetlights?
You know, and, yeah, but. It just.
Don't you need security out by your farm?
I have six dogs.
Um, but I can, you know, I agree with twenty first century technology, but that should be its own thing, the standalone paragraph or line. And, and list out what we strive for.
That should cut.
You know, EV charging stations, that's commu- that's public work, public places.
Yeah.
And high speed internet availability. Uh, for folks and cell coverage throughout town. You know, things that we currently don't have, but people would really like to have.
Mm-hmm.
But rural character is, to me, is keeping your farms in your forest. And you, and your gravel roads and stone and stuff and scenic roads.
And reclaiming gravel pit.
Yeah.
It's exactly something that we want to make sure that happens.
Yeah.
Um, I really like what you're saying and I think maybe not another paragraph, there were supposed to be themes that carry through every chapter. I have yet to hear where those themes are or what they are. Um, but if we were to do kind of a pullout of, you will see these overriding themes, the technology should cross through. Transportation, it may not hit every chapter, but what, I think you're onto something with the technology piece especially because. It's going to touch some of each chapter with the exception of, I don't know, at least one, maybe, oh, even with land, I think.
Yeah, still got.
Kind of fact, housing, transportation.
So maybe some of this could, as it is still, could be pulled into the themes, so that we're hitting those across. Because we talked a lot about cutting across the silos of the chapters.
Yeah, um. I think part of the problem there is that this would be a first time. That Brandy is being asked to. Organize according to themes.
I, I don't want to organize according to themes, I'm thinking a block pullout where we, where your teams that, that you're working with. Says, you know, the themes that we see crossing these chapters are, and just do it as a brainstorm, so technology. Um, you know, renewable, I don't know exactly what they're.
Sustainability.
Sustainability, so, and just have them like, you will see these recurring themes and then they can also be referenced in the index. Um, so they're easier to find for people who are of an interest in that area without trying to individually address them every single time. So that you are just constantly making a larger document, I guess, is what I'm trying to get away from. I don't know, it's just a.
Okay. Chapter two is transportation, um.
We got this sweet version, Lebanon.
Obviously, the covered bridge in Lebanon isn't going to fly. I think the latest proposal is a new shot of Main Street and Route Four. A photograph has not been taken yet and certainly can be changed.
I think we should get all the Jeep sunlight and the map, Rob's gonna hook us up.
Might be an awesome place for, for a aerial shot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or you can see the lake there in the background.
You got coming from the interstate so that the focus is more on Enfield, but you can see we're connected.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
This one's historical and it has a lot of good facts to it, I think. This is what you need as a, as a jump off on, on the transportation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um. Continuing on transportation on page, I guess it is eight and nine. Any comments, you know, we talk about interstate roads, class six roads, sidewalks. Class five roads, private roads.
That's a nice picture.
It's actually a capture from drone video that we already.
Yeah, that's, that's a nice picture.
Yeah.
Well, I also like on the.
Can we have one person talking at a time?
I like the, the comments on the side, the quick, almost summarizing in a quick comment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For the people that, there are gonna be people that scroll through this and are not gonna read the whole thing and catching those highlighted points.
Yes.
Or, that's nice.
Uh, let's see, on page nine, we have. The strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats comparison or grid. And that kind of summarizes where we are, what our opportunities are.
So, when I read this, it was not obviously a SWAT to me when I started in because it says transportation repeatedly. I think even just giving it a title and having it say transportation SWAT. For those, some people who don't know what it means aren't gonna care, and then, but then you know the title is transportation, and then you just go strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats.
Right.
Um. Anybody, even if they don't know what a SWAT analysis is, is still gonna be able to figure out how to read those. Or you, maybe you don't want to give a title, but I think you don't need to say transportation or.
Okay, no, that's a very good.
I really like the box.
Yeah. You like what?
I really like the box that's down there.
Hmm, yeah.
Okay.
I do too.
Uh.
I do think that curving could be slightly fair, just in terms of the spacing between, so that you know what belongs, because there's no bullets and I don't think it needs to be, but. Um, or this, not curving, um.
Line spacing.
Thank you.
I will agree with Kate that if you took the transportation out of those titles, it would make a bigger impact, especially to people that don't know. What a SWAT is.
Yeah.
I think it waters it down by having transportation in there four times.
I was like, oh, hey, cool, this is a SWAT when I got to the end.
Okay, um, next page, cover trails, public transit, parking. And then go into perspectives, priorities, capital plan, the regional project.
And ju- well, just one question, is that, I guess that map to me looks like it's just a cutoff of something else.
Look at it this way, Dan.
Okay, now I see it.
I, I've got the double page spread.
Right, where we have the single page spread.
And you have the single page spread so you could actually read the type.
Right.
I have Rob, go on the top, like a thread bar down, I don't know whatever they're called, just, you put, no, you put the cursor. You have your minus plus, you flip, and then there's one page, two page view.
No.
Right here.
One of those should be a two page view.
Under review, there's.
You know which one it is?
No. I did it at home, but I just remembered that's what I had to do.
It did automatically on my bigger screen.
Yeah, that's okay.
It's one of the.
Yeah, I think if we, if we make it too small, though, it'll be hard for you guys to see.
Yeah, that's okay.
Yeah.
It's just me.
You know, I have some comments on the, I don't, I didn't write down the page number, but for transportation. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Kurt.
Um. Route four, Route four A. I wrote down directions, traffic flow, and then users. I guess it was probably in those paragraphs when it was describing those roads.
Yeah.
I think maybe, because Route four and Route four A have different traffic patterns and different types of users. So maybe it's something, and there should be stated about that. And then Route four A and I eighty nine run parallel, but Route four.
Right.
Does not, and it's a connector road, Route four is the connector road for east-west. Route four A, I eighty nine is more of a north-south. Um, and four A is a, so, it's the old I eighty nine. It's the old way to. And four A is a sort, it's the old I eighty nine, it's the old way to conquer it. And but the traffic on that is just a different sort of like a scenic road versus a. Major road now. For a traffic flow. So just that, and then on the map itself, it shows these trailheads. It just, it's like three of them and it's just distracting. It really doesn't fit. It's not a trail map.
And they're also not the only trailhead.
Right, right, yeah, and it's not a trail map either. Just delete those. And then Lock Haven should be a, consider, say a connector road. And it's not labeled as such.
The amount of traffic that comes.
When you look at the map, you see all the feeder roads going into Lock Haven. That then goes to Shake Hill or Route, Shake Hill or Route four.
Traffic has changed on Lock Haven since COVID and with the, the school being changed with the intersection. And so I saw people out there and I asked them, why do you go by my house? Because I'm at the end, right? There's no reason you should go by my house normally. And it is because you can miss the Canaan Elementary turning traffic, the high school and middle school and. You miss all of it. I had no, and I was like, oh. And apparently news has gotten out. I'm gonna put a toll booth up at the end.
Okay, so, um, moving on, next page, talks about unmet and future needs. Sidewalks and trails, main Maple intersection. Public parking, public transportation and recommendation. Anybody have any concerns with those?
So the recommendations piece, um, could you scroll for us?
I am.
Oh, wait.
It's on the next page.
Then all of a sudden I was like, wait, how is it still moving? The recommendations, I think, um, I like them. I have the same question about order each time, right? Like just prioritizing, privacy and recency. And really thinking when we have these pullouts about why we have them in a certain order. And then, uh, there is one piece I think that is missing and I don't know if it's appropriate, I'll leave that up to your judgment. And I don't know if it's going anywhere, I'm gonna pick on you for a second, Ed, the scenic byway. Um, Meredith has put a lot of time into that, I don't know where it's going to go, but. Understand, I think to get some reinforcement and some at least radio.
That is, that is a change that I have asked, uh, Brandy to do, but it's not in this. In this revision. Yeah, I'll, I'll make another note.
See, I would, I would recommend on the recommendations that you look at the, and she may have, at the survey results. And there's gotta be, you know, this one was talked about more often than this one. That may be a good way to prioritize that, cause everybody is gonna prioritize these differently.
That's true, yeah.
Yeah, they are.
So we're gonna try to prioritize them, we do that or we make a connotation that they're not in any priority order.
Cause if you ask people around town, the biggest issue they, they have is the Route four Maple Street. It is the biggest issue.
I offended you several times recently, cause I went to work late and I could get across the intersection. I love it there, but I can't get across.
Yeah, you can, it's just a crazy.
I moved out of Boston for a reason.
It's just a crazy stuff and everybody knows it. And it got worse, cause it's made, made it get worse.
Yeah, and even though we all stood in the meeting and told the state they were wrong, many of us, very vocally. And not very nicely on my part, um, uh, they just did it anyway. And they were like, we're really great at this, look what we did at the high school, and we were like, exactly, that's what we're talking about.
Uh, okay, next chapter is economic development. We know that. Mill can use some economic development.
Be really good if you could Photoshop the hill.
That, that would probably cost more than we're spending on the plan, so the Photoshop.
What would you think would replace that? Like Keen Medical maybe?
So the largest employer in this town and school is the school district, so, right? And at Keen Medical, how many do they have?
Well, I think if you took the school district, district wide.
No, how many does Keen, how many employees does Keen have? Oh, are they physically on site here? Okay, then they are now, because they before, it was before they expanded, they were, okay.
Of course, it's a beautiful.
And you could take a picture next door for recreation.
We have something in Enfield Center that's in economic development, the Art Tech. The, that barn they built and they have nationwide and international shipping.
Yeah, they are done.
They're closed, they're finished.
Yeah, cause I'm trying to find somebody who wants to make that into my new cider or winery, I keep trying.
What happened?
It's about a week ago.
Yours, do you wanna like invest?
I bet your bookshop reopened there.
Next page.
And it's real, it's not falling down.
I think we should get a government grant to get, uh, use that dam to power electricity and then put a Bitcoin mine.
After we do Dan.
I think he's already working on that.
There's, there's money in it to refurbish all those little dams and. And, and generate electrical power.
The electric's working, huh? The other side of that is if you lower the dam by a foot, there is no flood flight.
Oh, did he get the part again? He's a very bright reverse. He is the person to reverse and mirror one of those. Okay, cause we, he hadn't been and I was like.
Yeah, he'd been offline for a while, we don't ever made the part.
Oh, I bet he made the part. He's super smart on that stuff.
Okay, commuting patterns. I found that interesting.
So how, I mean, the census is not my favorite source of data considering. The shortcomings this particular census had and the fact that it was done right before everybody decided they were gonna telecommute from home. Like the timing is really, I just got a little nervous, I guess.
Well, it's bigger than that, I don't have a lot of facts and figures, but across the country, there's a lot of people citing that the data's wrong.
Oh, yeah. But the data is the data.
Yeah, I just don't know if we wanna make it our standing point, uh. I don't know, I guess I trust Upper Valley Lakeside Regional Planning more if they are.
Yeah, but a lot of the, well. Working from home, the office people, good, the back office people could, but. Everybody else had to show up.
Yeah, I, and I think, but it's just, it's changed how people work in general and what companies allow very, very much, like. I had to show up depending on what I was doing, but. You, it, it's so everybody had their kind of own deal. What I'm finding is a lot of people are just simply, if you tell them to go back to the office, they quit and get a new job. And Enfield has good high speed internet in many homes now. And Hub sixty six is not gonna out the installation, so I think we're gonna find this is different. Or do we acknowledge that we know this data? Was majorly impacted by COVID and.
I think it's fine, I think it goes. I mean, what it's really showing, if you boil it down, it's a lot of the people that work here live, or live here, work out of town. And I think that's true, no matter what you.
Right, it's, we're a bedroom town.
People or eighteen hundred people.
Desirable, right? The goal is to do your work and do the dirty outside of town and then come hang out and do recreation with us.
Not on an economic development, on the recreation.
No, but for me, like, the beauty of living in Enfield is you can bring outside dollars in. Where you get your outside buying power and then you spend it here with us, right?
No, I'm just backing up, cause it, it, this isn't really good for my ratings. It's important, but.
You can put a little note at the end in your thing that says if you wanna see the discussion, you can go to. Give a plug for YouTube.
Believe me, I've heard from my audience and I, I don't think they wanna hear the discussion, they wanna hear the final outcome so they can argue with that.
Well, that will be a few months down the road.
Well, it's why the push in town means one of our ten people. I spent a lot of time in Enfield, I'm not one of these people that commutes in and out of town all the time, I'm here twenty-four seven.
Um, just a general comment on passive voice, making sure we convert to active voice, we don't need to. I, I have particular distinct dislike for have been anywhere.
Perspectives and priorities, another SWAT analysis.
Yeah, yeah, title the gray box, not the blue box.
And I mean, there's a great opportunity, right? When you're doing your index to just reference SWAT analysis and then have page.
Pages where they all are. Cause those will jump out to people, they will read those.
Unmet and future needs. Tourism, infrastructure. Anything on, where is this, eighteen and nineteen? Yeah, eighteen nineteen. On the spread that's twenty and twenty-one. I'm not sure if it's gonna go here, but there is. A new sidewalk map that Brandy is working on, it's almost done. And I think she said it's gonna replace this map, but.
Does it, do we count like the sidewalks to know where they're disjointed and the ones that you, yeah, do we tell?
Um, it's, actually, it's even gonna show the current. Sections of sidewalks that are gonna be done over the next year.
So like Enfield Center's sidewalk will be on it?
Does it, Rob, do you remember? Does it cover Enfield Center?
Enfield Center has sidewalks.
Yeah, we drive, we drive that little hook, little.
Do, does the map that she did, the new map?
I don't know, maybe.
Oh, the Maple Tree, that's true, I forgot about that, that thing's been under the grass for a while.
Start talking about the Maple.
I used to walk on that when I was a kid. That one with the sidewalk.
Okay, recommendations, any issues?
Um, I was wondering here, and maybe I missed it, uh. Is there any attempt to? Encourage some diversity of choice, like. Because when you go somewhere, I'm gonna pick Canaan and say, so you could drive into downtown Canaan and you can. Find something to do, right? You can go get a snack, you can get different kinds of food stores. But you're like, hey, I'm hungry, do you drive to Enfields and get pizza? Or do you go to Canaan and have choice and decide on the way? Lebanon's the same way, right? You decide on the way. And do it out with your family, so could we make Enfield a destination where you can decide on the way? Or are we gonna continue to be, and I, I, I love the, I eat in Enfield, um, but are we gonna do something to diversify our offerings? Where we say, we, maybe we aim towards pre approving certain, like, we want, we say we want a bakery. Do we say we would waive X, Y and Z? I don't know what we can do.
That sounds like something for the economic development chapter rather than transportation.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm in economic development though, right? I was gonna say, I'm in economic development, did I?
We're in economic development.
I'm sorry.
So I guess like, just the question of how we, you know, like we have basically no.
I think it's more recruiting thing. Think we can waive rules and stuff to entice.
I mean, I don't know, some places, like cities, have fast tracks for certain things they want, so.
My concern is I hear from a lot of the local businesses now, new business coming in don't have to pay taxes for X amount of time and that's really pissing them off.
That's not. Not really how that works. But if they have questions on it, they should go talk to the people who know.
And we can make rules for small retail or restaurant type facilities, but I don't know that you can pick out single types of.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
We might get ten more pizza places.
And I love the pizza here, I keep going to the different ones, so I don't rule anybody out, but I only eat some of the pizza. I think like some of the, like, commitment to supporting businesses through sidewalks. And initiatives to expand availability and. Help people with their mindset and maybe even talk a little bit about help, like. That it's great for you to get a thousand steps walking from point A to point B. If you walk from here to here, you're gonna get a thousand steps, right? Can we incorporate any of the, um, I'm not saying say all that in this chapter, but something about like creative approaches to. Alternative transportation that support economic development, I guess.
I think a big part and part of my vision coming in here, I don't know if it may been in, but it's. Connecting the outdoor recreation that we take, so. You know, we pride ourselves in that and really connecting that to our downtown and our economic development, that's.
We can put signs on everything.
We run into the issue. We keep pushing for the downtown where the economic development is on Route four.
I think that's our fault, not.
Wow, I guess the difference between Enfield and Canaan is their downtown actually goes on Route four. In our case, people have to make it, make an effort to get to the downtown, cause it's not.
Yeah, we need to pull them down.
In the normal, exactly, you gotta pull them down, but you gotta pull them down. For a reason. Yeah, and you gotta come up with that reason.
I think having it off of Route four is a plus and a minus. Cause Route four shooting by at thirty, forty miles an hour, people are not gonna stop unless they want to go there, but. You can make the downtown really vibrant because it's off of Route four.
Could we put some kind of directory, like the one that's at the end of?
Well, and I think having anchor businesses. Are what really drives things like that home, like if you had something fantastic and fun like a brewery. Then somebody might walk down to the anti step, the step and whatever. Uh, because Canaan kind of has developed around, like, you get a couple places that are kinda neat to eat and. Pretty soon you get some artists and you got a flower shop and, and it's sprung up, I would call Paris is the, it's the Paris of Mascoma, right? Right now, that's where people are going for the kind of those unique boutique things that people think and talk about, but we aren't attracting.
Well, and it's the. It's the people versus placement, so as a town, I mean, my goal, and I talked to Rob about this, is. We need to do everything we can do to host events and do things to drive people downtown. And business will follow. If not, there's no one down there, so why would the business look right there?
And, and they used to go downtown, that's why we have the ugly garage, um. Because we needed more space to put a doctor in town, so we threw that, but we had Billy's Triangle Store and we had the hardware store and. And people went downtown, and there was also parking spots.
Moving on to housing.
Back to reorder those though, I think, also, we're, we're still with that. You gotta reorder those.
I, I think, you know, for all of them.
Before we get to housing, just a question, more of a question. Um, I heard that during the, uh, focus group for the economic one, there was some pushback on. From the folks and I think I, Rob was saying that part of it was, they didn't like the term rural. And maybe something else, and I was wondering if that was, if that was just that, or if there was other stuff that they were. Felt that Enfield was being restrictive or, or something.
I I I think, I I think, you know, we kind of came to the conclusion that rural means. It's, uh, it's a, a definition by federal government, I believe.
Now, but my concern, my question, my question is, what was the people that were concerned? What was their concern? What were their, what was their thought process that economic, that Enfield wasn't promoting enough economic? Or the master plan wasn't helping them, was a negative to them? I was wondering what. Or was it just the planning board was negative to them and not helping them, or was it simply the classification?
I I I think it was. Not that the planning board wasn't helping them, or the town wasn't helping them, but there was no. Single. Effort, single point of contact. For economic development, you know, you've got EVA, which has an economic development. Committee or subcommittee, um, now we have Rob who is working on behalf of the town. And. I I don't think people are, you know, those two groups are working against each other. But they're not necessarily working with each other either, so.
And that has to do, it was by design at one point because the town gave the village association a certain amount of money to do those activities. When they changed their location and they did the HUD housing. And kind of progressive did not have a director anymore. Some of those things went away, they kept the economic development committee, I had been off and on. With them doing things like Small Business Saturday, where I created the event and was like, who's gonna do it with me? And they were like. Uh, these people in the committee, and they didn't have activities ongoing, so I think it's more, the folks who are trying to do it now are really doing it. From a good place where they're trying, and they've coordinated with Rob, but I think. We're probably at the point where the town needs to take some more ownership and have a really candid conversation with Eva because. They're volunteers and people, we really tax our volunteers in this town. So being kind and not saying we don't want your help, but. Talking about what the future of that kind of work does, and when you rely solely on volunteers to do something that is, I would say, critical. You eventually burn them out.
You know, we could, instead of saying rural character, we could call it small town character.
I mean.
Yeah, I think David had a good point, I mean, rural is defined by the federal government, but there is that. Connotation, some people see rural as a negative and some people see it as a positive.
I would say, it's where I live, right? In people's minds, it's out like Hillbilly Deluxe with the pigs and the cows and.
Technically Lebanon's rural.
But they don't call themselves rural. And I guess that's it, is do you want to define yourself and box yourself in, or do you, you you could use rural and limit how many times you do it. Or do we lean on this live, work, play? Like that we're a place of opportunity where you can do all of the, enjoy all of the things and still not be sectioned off from, you know, amenities. Probably just some word refinement.
Hey, whose house is this?
That is the Chrono's former home. Fifty-five Shaker Hill Road.
It's just so.
Corner of Hillsburg, yes, because it got repainted before.
That's right, that's what, that's whose house.
Was this, was this mill management housing, now in the old day? No?
That actually is really neat house because they own the majority of the middle.
Right.
Of that, and, um. At one point, I think it was early eighties, they had like animals still in the barn and stuff and out in the, and Brenda Souza owned it. It's just one of those things, like randomly there was this farmhouse, that, it's not random, obviously it was by design back then, but it's, it continued to exist. Into a time when everybody else had given up the horse buggy and all the things.
We still have the sheep in town, don't we?
We do, we do, Dr. Silers.
That's rural character.
There was once upon a time, there was a pony across from elementary school.
Yep, somebody that's got chickens on Route four right by, uh, planters. Getting out into, uh, into Route four.
You mean the chickens that are in between the elementary school and the veterans' farm?
I don't know how they're still alive, if they're in Route four, they're gonna get run over.
They're chickens.
They're chickens.
By the chicken bathroom.
They have a right, right of way.
I mean, if you gotta admit though, it is kind of fun, right? I mean, it's like. I don't even like chickens, but I think it's fun, I have them. But, I kind of like enjoy people, I like that people like being here.
What, where's the balloon house?
That is condo.
That's, uh, yeah.
When they repainted the condos.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they're pretty bright.
Yeah.
I like, I like, I, it's kind of neat though, somebody did a pretty good job actually, making them not look so like condo-y boring.
Right.
Uh, yeah, were they gray and beige for a while?
Yeah.
There's some yellow now.
Yeah, they, they've done a lot of work in that, in that complex, they paved the roads, painted them and new roofs.
Hey, they got a whole.
Values have gone.
Right, they got a receptive and they got.
And they went from seventy thousand, eighty thousand apiece, they're now going over two hundred thousand.
Yes, wow.
Yeah.
Yep.
Who doesn't wanna have lake access that cool in a tennis court? But it's a great spot if you just wanna go to work and go home and not have to do.
Right.
And they do have some cool shared lake access, yeah.
Yeah.
A lot of good.
I mean, it is really a live, work, play type situation where you don't spend a lot of time.
Yep.
Yep.
Lot of good information on this page.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, anything that needs to be added?
So that affordable housing costs no more than thirty percent of household growth income?
Right.
That's like it.
That's like a federal definition?
Oh, oh, I, we can call it a federal definition now, cause I was like, I don't think that's true here.
Well, that's what that whole slide says.
Right.
More than one in Florida and held us.
Yeah. My vision, how I read it, like from a graphic standpoint is like, it makes this point and then it makes the other one, I was like. Just even little, um.
A little.
Footnotes.
Yeah.
Getting some footnotes onto the page, and also within the text, getting some cross references that are like C table, blah, blah, blah.
Um, this, this addition or this revision draft. Does not have any of the hyperlink that will be embedded. In, well, essentially in the final, but, you know, that, that whole thing has to be put together.
Yeah, cool.
That other graph there. Oh, there, okay, nevermind.
My thing is, so when you have a graphic like this though. I wanna know where the data came from, as a reference, even if you have a table of references in the back. Because someday, we're gonna be like, hey, let's recreate that table. No one's gonna remember, and I'm still gonna be alive and I'm gonna be like, uh-oh.
The difference, I'm not gonna be.
All right, let.
You have to live forever.
Well, let me ask a question of this group in regard to the bar graph.
Yeah.
Those bar graphs contra-, um, compare. Actual increases in housing units. Year or decade over, over a decade.
Yeah.
So obviously Lebanon being the most populated has the largest increase.
Yep.
Or, yeah, I guess it's increased, decreased, whatever. And. I thought you might be able to get a better comparison if it showed percentage increase.
What if, um, you slapped a line on it that shows you the variance, like, which would be a percentage? And had it run over the bars, right? So that you're providing another data point. So you still can see the bars to see, hey, it went from this to this, because I think that's an important as a fiction, especially when you see, and feel like. Drop, but to give the variance as a line. Um, I don't know. That's really hard to design until you see them and you don't like them repeatedly.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do follow.
Yeah. Well, the more information you get, the harder they are to read.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Something really simple, so the percentage.
Right.
Yeah, those reference points.
Yeah, I mean, this is good information, but it's a useful information.
Because you, you don't know what the background is, it's like.
The percentage would actually show that our. Our housing stock compared to the size of our town.
Right.
Grew less than everybody else's or something, that would be useful.
That, that's, that's an interesting fact.
Yeah.
And the, just the, the, the way she's got it here doesn't really.
She couldn't really care less that Lebanon had a thousand new housing units compared to their two thousand and seven.
But, you know, did, did Lebanon grow twenty percent compared to Enfield's four percent? That's an interesting fact. Or did Enfield grow four percent compared to Plainfield's twenty or Canaan's?
Yeah.
Yeah, cause you need to know total housing units in order to really make it work. Yeah.
So.
And I, to tell you the truth, I don't really. Personally, I don't care how we grew from seventy to ninety, it's how have we grown over the last ten years or something?
This is more relevant.
What is that percentage?
Well, I think that this also begs the question, did we build quality housing where they were able? Because you may have built something decent enough quality or that was adequate enough, so you were just giving out renovations and additions, right? And that is still a valid thing to consider, this is just a static, you got another block.
Right.
Yeah. And you don't know the story, I mean, I've listened to enough of these, I haven't been around Enfield, but. You've heard all those little things of just a subdivision that comes in that could really skew these numbers.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we've been repeatedly told there were no subdivisions here, and then if you read this document, you can clearly see there are. You're like, uh.
They're just small.
But they're big for Enfield, that's.
Yeah.
That's it, that's exactly it.
Uh, yeah, I think that's a really, I like that direction.
Yeah.
Excuse me, David, I'm gonna excuse myself now, I gotta.
Okay. No problem.
Good meeting.
Thanks. I, I hope you didn't tank your ratings totally.
If you tell everybody if they watch to the end, they get a free gift.
Can I tell them you'll provide it?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a free truckload of manure if they come get it.
Have to shovel it out of the bar. Here's the fork.
It's over there. Uh, first, did you have a?
Well, I'm just, I don't remember if it's attached on that housing units that that's actual constructed or approved. Um, cause there's a difference, especially with Lebanon. They have a lot more approved housing than actually constructed house.
With that.
I believe this is actual constructed units.
Building permits.
Building permits.
Net, net permits.
Okay, for different decades, right?
Yeah.
Or twenty, twenty or blocks, yeah.
I'll ask a stupid question. Does it really, does it, does it add anything to the, to the master plan?
That's a good question.
I think what it shows, but I like the percentage better. Is. And I would like to see a shorter timeframe to see if we're, are we trending up or are we not? Cause we may have done nothing through two thousand to two thousand fifteen, but the last six years. We may be growing, and it doesn't show any of that.
So, a line and then a regression line?
Or does it show what people think? I can't get anything approved in that field.
God, I hear that all the time, and I'm like, you come, come hang out with us, you go to Rob, he gives you the directions, and we're like. Hey, we're willing to listen to you, and then go see them if you need any more help.
Right.
Right? I don't, I, there's.
But you know what I'm saying.
Oh, yeah, no, I've been told all the time, and then, but, uh, people who come here and go through the process. And then they tell me about this nightmare they went through in a larger town that shall not be named, um, are like, oh, it was so much easier in Enfield, they're like. Can you please tell your friend?
That's what you heard, right there.
That's what I said, we hand out permits like candy.
It gets back to the land, sixty-five percent of land is undevelopable.
Well, we need to promote that.
I, I think we can too, I think things like easy permitting process, flow charts, C-bro. Billboard.
Okay. We are now the home of car washes.
Yeah.
Whatever, you need to be known for something.
Okay. Perspective and priorities. Any comments there?
Oh, yeah.
It's all true.
Can we call it age and place housing?
Can we what?
Call it age and place housing, like, we talk about it, meaning the age and place housing, under perspectives. Um, I just, I, I think we, we do a disservice when we don't offer any age and place housing. Because we, it does a couple of things, it doesn't vacate large homes for people who want to move in, who might. Change our geography a little bit, and it also doesn't allow us to keep these people who are valued members of our community. Who might sit on a committee with us and have this fabulous historic knowledge. Um, so I see it as a detriment in two ways, we could get a twofer if we provided more age and place housing. Opportunity, I, I think we would also see the families people talk about wanting and.
Well, we were just talking about that today too, and that, I hate to say it, but you actually do get a lot of like from that. Because there are housing that they start having trouble heating and paying the taxes on, and then they can't. The maintenance, or they get older and they can't do the maintenance. So, I do think moving forward with some kind of smaller. Community type housing that lets people age and place.
The beautiful red house is an example, right, of somebody who vacated their home in retirement, that is a large home. That is now, has a family in it, but they were able to secure a unit that was small, a, a apartment of housing that was smaller.
Yeah.
Those are super.
Around the corner.
Uh, yeah, you have to like walk over to the builder and be like, yeah, what are you building?
Yeah, Rob, you saw that picture I sent you from my, my old hometown, it's just. This one long building, with looking, a double garage, and then a house, and then a double garage, and then a house. And it's all one level, so you can get in with a wheelchair, doors are all thirty-six inches.
One conversation at a time, please, the microphone's picking up all of you.
Can I say, can I say something?
I'm gonna get up and show it. That's a cop out. What? Small towns like Enfield have a very limited ability to influence housing market, that's a cop out. I'm sorry, but you can, small towns can influence the housing market. That's not a reason why.
Small towns sometimes have small-minded people who like copying outs.
Right, but that, that, that term is a cop out.
I actually almost think different.
Right, exactly.
I think we have the room and the ability to, to change that.
Yeah.
That would be extremely difficult in a larger city.
Yeah.
Yep.
You've got the space.
Yeah.
And the ability to do it, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and we are.
You know, we were trying to do it in Claremont and we can't.
You can't because it's developed.
Possible, yeah, you'd have to get large tracts of multiple privately owned properties. So, yes, it would be a lot easier here, so I agree with you, I think that's a bad.
I wrote it down. Okay. I wrote it down, and I'm gonna suggest that Brandy either. Watch the, listen to the tape, watch the tape. Or probably.
Right, in your housing, you showed areas where you can.
Yeah.
Do it. So you can't say you can't, if you know, if you've shown that you can.
I think this graphic is a good example of using, um, Rob's idea about doing the areas.
Yeah.
I, I don't know how comfortable it would be to have your house represent an entire block. But, I mean, I know, I know, like, maybe in Lakeview I have again, but, you know, even chances varied.
Right.
Very, very various, um, you know, there's eighteen hundred Shaker dwelling that's been, well, it's.
I'm gonna agree and disagree, cause unless we, unless we made this a lot bigger graphic or really cut it down. And aerial photo would really show almost enough.
Well, I kind of like, see Chosen Mill and Birch.
Yep.
I guess that's what I would.
Right.
Just something that it's a little bit more, it's an actual development.
I think Lakeview would really be easy to do that way.
Yeah.
Lakeville, you could do that with Anderson Hill.
Cause in Massachusetts, they just take all the cookie cutter houses and they slap them together, we don't do that here typically, some places we do, but not I.
Yeah. Okay.
Aspect Heinz is not Aspect Heinz, that is. This is Anne's place.
Yeah, it is. Prospect Heinz is red, you're right. For the rough road. Okay. Anything else?
No. Yeah, that's Bill Warren, wasn't it? Bud and Mildred is, is not dead.
Is, um, is Mount, yes, Mount View is.
Mount View is. About Massoma Heights, is that on there?
Oh, it should be. Yeah, Massoma Heights, that's a good one.
Yeah, Massoma Heights should be on there, you need to, cuz that was a good sized development.
That's where I lived at the last house, if I'm right, when I was.
Yeah.
I tried to get my parents to move my rock downtown.
Okay, anything else?
That one question that popped up, go back up a little bit, that, the text in the gray. I just, the first thing that popped in my mind when it said the major developments in Enfield were the seventies to the nineties is, how does that compare? I'm guessing that's probably true in many communities.
Yeah.
Maybe that needs to be mentioned in the gray then, just like, like many communities, or whatever, what to use for language.
I mean, I don't know how it compares, but I'm guessing it's very similar, especially to.
Well, in that alliance with like the boomer phase, right? Where you, which are now our folks who are needing age and place house.
I mean, it may be true, it may be not, out west, the two thousands to two thousand eight was.
Was the boom.
There were, you know, each contractor had forty, fifty houses going at a time, but how does this compare to, you know, Lebanon, Hanover, Plainfield, place where.
Our upper valley peers.
I bet it's very similar.
The towns, I bet it is, Lebanon and Hanover, Lebanon just exploded.
Yeah.
The, the thing about Lebanon is, it feels like it's exploded, but a lot of the people don't live there, they explode during the day. I'm not saying they haven't gotten more housing, it just is, if you were to compare the total number of people who are there in the population during a day versus at night.
Well, and you're talking about major residential developments.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, but I mean Hitchcock went from fifteen hundred employees to over five thousand.
Right.
When they moved to the new place.
So, just a thought, I don't know the answer, but that's the first thing that popped in my mind when I read it, was how does this compare?
All right. Anything on the next page, scroll down.
Um, see the asterisks like the star nineteen ninety, is that something that needs to update or?
I, I think she may have that there just to check the date, note, note to solve type of thing.
This goes back to my two, if it's not common knowledge, it needs a citation.
In the, in the last column, you know what I might change? I might change Enfield needs to Enfield wants on both of those. Enfield wants more housing that meets the need, and Enfield wants a greater diversity of housing types.
Yeah.
That's a good, good work, Jay, yeah.
Nineteen ninety is the right date.
Yeah, I was just curious what the star is for.
I think she probably was putting a little note to herself to check that.
That's what I, that's what I think.
Those are the things that you do for yourself that later on.
Yeah, that's why.
It happens to all of us. That's why we do things together.
Anything else?
So this tiny houses thing, um, I just, so I love tiny houses, I think they're super fun, but like, is this really a goal to promote tiny houses? And are we willing to take the, make the, you know, next step of changing our zoning, right? Are we, is it something we really want?
Technically, we can't right now, that's against state law.
Yeah, so I guess I just was like, I mean, tiny houses are like cool and stuff, but.
They're working on making it legal, but it's not, cuz they don't meet the law code.
And, and they're saying that we've been building them for generations, but we.
I just said, that's not true.
No.
No, that's not a tiny house, I, I just, yeah.
Right, that's a camp.
Yeah, I, I, I think in her head, she's equating camps with tiny houses, or making, making the analogy that, um, what were called camps.
Yeah.
Fifty or twenty-five years ago are now.
But they're not, tiny houses are very specific.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, I do, there's a, yeah, I think it's.
And people are.
I like the way it's worded, it's correct.
Can we go for the word minimalist?
Can we get one, can we get, can we hear from Tate first, and then, and then Ed, please?
I, I think if maybe we talk about the minimalist trend of downsizing, instead of calling out tiny houses, because a lot of these camps are relatively bare bones, like you have a bunk room and everybody hangs together, totally cool, but that's not a tiny house. Um, so maybe just addressing the minimalist trend and, and the trend of downsizing, I don't know, in a different way.
Yeah, I think you could even just reword it, that's where I was going, instead of saying, I think you could leave the tiny houses, and then instead of we are building them, you could say we've been building smaller structures for years. Cuz that's not a tiny house, I mean, there's a definition of tiny house.
Yeah.
But she's trying to say.
Right.
We've built small, and if you look way back in the past, a thousand square foot home was a decent sized home, and now, we want much bigger than that, many people do. And I think the trend is switching back to the, to the smaller homes, maybe not even fully tiny house, but I think it's just a wording issue that makes it technically a false statement.
Yeah. Tiny house has almost become a legal term.
Yeah, no, you're right, yeah.
If you leave the wheels on it, you're good, if you take the wheels off, they're toast.
Right.
Yeah, there you have, there have wheels, they're on a frame, there's, there's a definition of a tiny house.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody have anything on population rates of change, housing units? I mean, it's, recommendations need to be prioritized on the next page.
You're so good at this.
Yeah.
I think we hang out too much.
No.
There's a, see the little yellow flag, what did that say, I'm curious?
Space left for permanent data.
Okay. She's got it, we gave it to her.
Which she has now.
Yeah.
You have a slide backup, I wanna see that age group thing again.
Wow.
That somewhat surprises me, I would have thought it would have skewed, skewed older.
We slap a regression line on it. This is me with my regression line, I like to know which way I'm going. This one wouldn't be that easy, do you know what I mean, it's a non-obvious one.
Kinda cool.
Or do we not slap a line on and just state the trend is, interesting.
I think it's fairly obvious on this one.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, I know a ton of people who are sixty-five to seventy-four.
So do I.
I might have said that for all benefit. Wait, what happened to my category, am I even on?
There, there's two of us right here at this meeting.
At least.
Yeah, I'm angry cuz they're flying.
Yeah, at least, more than.
Yeah.
I th- I think we're in the majority, actually.
Look, but it's kinda interesting, look at the twenties.
I know.
That's an interesting one, huh? How do we keep them?
I don't know.
I've been working on that. What's even scarier than that is.
It's not pizza.
No, I've set meetings, this is off subject, but I've set meetings with the late twenty, early thirty-somethings, and, and had some of those conversations of why they returned or why they're staying here. And a lot of it's what I'm hearing nationally is, people are really picking where they wanna live, and then determining a career from that. So the outdoor recreation and the things to do are drawing people here.
Interesting.
So if we use that as a, a promotion, we can draw more back.
That fifteen to nineteen, that's our high school.
Well, yeah, I know, but it's, yeah, that's the one that's a scary one. That's the one that, yeah, you're right, that is the scary one.
But that's the big difference.
We've gone from two hundred fifteen to nineteen, is that fifteen?
Thirty-six, yeah.
Yeah, but there's something wrong with that number.
No, that, that's, that's the whole school enrollment problem encapsulated.
That came like this, and then it was like this.
I know, but we've gotta have more than fifty-six kids at that high school.
I don't think we do, because there's four, there's a four hundred kids usually, luckily, and Enfield's portion is.
Forty-two percent.
Yeah, but of the whole district, so those other, that's the whole district, cuz our ADM is district wide. I bet in the high school, we don't, I bet like other, and that's probably why, I remember when the renovation went through, and Canon took that huge tax hit, because they recalibrated all in one year from three-year trailing average to.
And if you talk to the superintendent, our elementary school's doing better.
That gated it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're stable, they're not.
I heard a rumor, they cleaned out almost all of the gym.
Yeah.
The dictator told me, that was my daughter.
Yeah.
She wants it cleaned out the rest of the way. That's what I was saying, I like that, that graphic, can we make it bigger? Well, I'm just saying it's more interesting than the numbers on the page.
It is, yeah, it is more.
We just spent more time on it, so can we make it bigger?
I, I don't disagree with that, I think it's one of the best graphics I've seen.
Yeah, yeah.
Hey, I got a question on, I think it's that chart, but I didn't write down the page number correctly, uh, does that one show the family income?
Percentage change, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, um, maybe it's just me, but on the first column, it has percent change.
Five percent?
It's not the number, but just the, the title, percent change from what?
Adjusted, from what, oh.
Not from the nineties.
From ninety to two thousand?
Well, well, it has percentage for the first column.
It's.
So nineteen ninety percentage.
Oh, okay, I know what you mean, yeah.
Percent, okay, it's, it's one of that numbers, I can't read it from here, but X percentage, nineteen ninety.
Percent?
From, from the year prior, or, or what prior?
These numbers though, right?
I can, it's the previous.
It's based on.
Yeah, but it doesn't say that there.
Yeah, it's just census data.
Yeah, so.
Right.
And it's probably straight from the census, I don't think it's something she can change.
No, no, but I'm just, what, on the first nineteen ninety, it should be maybe just an X, and then two thousand percent change.
I just don't know.
Something to that effect.
I don't know that she can change it.
But what if we pop a box in this explainer box?
We could, oh, I see, I can just retype.
You can.
Just redo it.
But I think if you type, to answer Kurt's question, if you type a little explainer box in, and then we make my graphic bigger, that's going somewhere, I.
Yeah.
It's just the way I was reading the graph, and it's a little like, okay, the first column's a percent change, but it doesn't say from.
But to the entire nineties, it went up by five percent.
It's census to census.
Right, census to census.
So why didn't they do the last? They forgot how to map?
What do you mean?
From two thou- twenty-ten to twenty-nineteen.
Like they forgot to map?
Yeah.
This was.
But then they wouldn't have of any, oh, well, I mean, it wouldn't be on the chart, to go up to nineteen ninety, but it would be off, I don't know.
Right.
I wanna see their formulas.
Right.
I'll get really upset, won't I? I don't do magic math.
Okay, moving right along. Cuz the hour is getting late.
We want Brad to change the census.
So we're.
Yes.
We're, we're gonna work on prioritizing the recommendations.
Yeah.
Oh, what is a lot, wait.
Land use.
Land use.
Oh, it's four, six, A.
Yeah.
Um.
Concealment.
That's like, really visually confusing.
Yes, it is.
It has been all along, yeah, I looked at it and I went, wait a minute.
If there's any way to get that all in one column.
Yeah.
Even if you have to add a, a picture down in the bottom corner to make it look even.
Yeah. Yeah.
Cuz my brain went, these are two separate things, but why does it start with C? Cuz it's how your eyes move for the graphics.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is not a land use, so do we all know this?
No, we do, I don't.
I mean, it's how you cram somebody right up next to the walkway, because, you know, it was cool when you could get your horse right to your house, but maybe not our best representation of life.
Well, I can fail, it's harder to lighten up the road.
Okay, I had a meltdown about this quote in English, and it started with a butt, and.
But that's what a resident said.
Oh, no, I know, I. We have to pick that one, was that like the best one that had the best sense, I just, maybe it was.
Maybe it was.
It was, I just.
Well.
I just, when I read it, I, it was a struggle bus ride for me.
You put a column there and just keep it as a long sentence.
Or. Here. Some growth in bracket to make it a larger S and B, I don't know, I just, because I think it still honors the sense, right, some growth, you're not being like, woo! Maybe necessary, although, I don't know, it's just not my favorite.
Is there a way, I don't know if that'd look bad, but, uh. I've seen them do it where they quote like after me, and then start again at the some, some growth.
You can do that, I mean, it's a valid way of, it, it's.
Okay.
So we've got a missing percentage, which I'm sure you guys noticed.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think we actually have a number now, but I don't know what it is.
Sentences don't start with however. Yes, and everyone that Nancy Grout scored.
Somewhere on the, okay, near the bottom, bottom of the screen, that paragraph is just starting nearly eight thousand, scroll.
Yeah.
Um, I believe it says nearly eight thousand acres is unavailable, uh, for development or something or other.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, can we change that to is protected from developments?
Hmm, yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
And then on that map. I think it's that map. Actually, the page four, some of those blocks need to be verified. Gonna write which ones, which ones, what's. Uh, number, the one off, number seven.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm not familiar with that block, I don't know which, where she got that from. Is that Oak Hill Boys Camp Road?
It's Oak Hill.
It's Oak Hill.
Oh, did it float the number of votes?
Yeah, it's Oak Hill.
I don't know what block that's referring to, I'm familiar with a lot of the conservation land and, and field and.
Is that the one that goes from ledge, there's ledge, cuz ledge road connects down, doesn't it? From.
Isn't that the one that they just logged, Kurt?
I don't, I don't know.
Where's that llama farm?
I mean, the land trust has a lot of property, and then, you know, have easement on properties, private easements, but it's still privately held, it just has an easement on it. Um. But it's, not all those properties are being shown on that map either, so I don't know where that information came from.
Scroll down, show what's seven, what, what Lindy's the first of like, is seven, oh, yeah, the block.
Yeah.
The same as that's. Well, let's see, oh, well, number one is probably the outline of the fishing gang property.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Number one, fifty-seven hundred acres.
Yeah.
Have Bill Wyler's fifth bond, shake a forest.
Yeah, see, that six is a weird spot too.
Yeah.
Cuz that should be over with, like half in reference marks, but I think that six belongs to, this is society land right here.
Yeah, yeah, that's part of society lands, number, yeah, something like that.
Across the road.
Yeah. Yeah.
Y'all can't have my beaver pond. That's where six is.
Yeah.
My kid will fight you.
Okay. On to this next map here, this is, uh. Okay, flood hazards.
Yeah.
FEMA maps.
That's really interesting, that FEMA map, because if you lobby your congressperson properly, because you actually are on a hill and definitely not in a flood place along the lake, you can get off of the list.
Sure.
Because you have to do it.
Yeah.
And you're like, you're all dead if we go under.
Right.
Yes. Yeah, I had to do it, but I have to, Moma, letter of map amendment.
Ah. But you really do have to push for it because it takes a long time.
Costs money, yeah. All right, anything else?
Next one.
I like that picture.
Yeah, soil suitability, okay, on the. That one. We have the soil map to leap the water sewer. Um, info just. Just confuses, really just doesn't fit there. It's right, it should have its own map, basically, the water sewer lines should have its own map. And it should be in the housing.
Does soil suitability help us, right, I'm not trying to be silly, but we are not advocating in our plan to become a farming community. So like, I read soil maps at three in the morning because I love them, but is it good information for people who are? I don't know, I just.
Yeah, right, I mean, I.
Right.
I agree, the map is, besides it's so broad, so broad scale, it's useless for any.
Right, cuz.
Practical purpose.
See how this is all one soil suitability grade? There is, there are splits here that are very distinct that make them not good for quite a few different things, like the difference between growing potatoes and growing trees on my property varies so widely, but that is, I own basically all of that section. Um, it, it kinda just, I don't know, I think it's too general.
Right, right, it's too much of a, it's, the scale's too broad.
Are we better off referring people to the actual resource that's helpful?
Kurt, is it, I mean, uh, David, is this the map that Sealy insisted on us having?
Again.
Did Sealy want us to have this map? I can't remember. I don't see how it truly affects land use or tells the statement of how you can use the land.
Yeah.
I mean, if we're, if we're pointing to it to say we're blocking this whole area because of this type of soil, then I think it would be important.
Some of the best soil.
But if we're not making the statement of this is why we're dividing our land up the way we do, then it really tells no story. I like his idea of the sewer and water, sort of more like an inset.
Yeah. Um, and a- again, remember that these are, you know, the five thousand foot view. Right. Where you're not gonna see the little differentiations between potato growing land, tree growing land.
And I don't think we should, I mean, it was driving me nuts listening to the master planning discussion that we were talking about how a person was gonna use their lot in this area. That's not the purpose of a master plan.
Right, no.
It's to show how the town's gonna incentivize or push different types of housing or use different tracts of land.
So that.
And I don't think this really shows any of that.
I know.
And we're not gonna base the decision on the soil. That's the other thing.
And the topography would be very important.
Right, use a lot of different factors.
Right.
I was just pointing to that one spot, so some of the best soil in the state of New Hampshire, like Panzamoa, is this right here.
Right.
If you wanted to do anything with this map that you really want, then you need to be thinking about preserving this for farming because it really is incredible. Um, and I.
Yeah, if you were highlighting blocks like that and telling that because of the soil, you know, we're keeping this as ten acre tracks or something for that reason alone, then it makes sense, but.
And it's also one of the best places to put the village plan. Sorry. But it is, you know? If you were looking to do the village plan, that's.
That's a good place.
That same place would be, it is flat, it's flat property, it's on two-state roads.
It's undeveloped.
And it's undeveloped.
Still available, yes.
Oh, and it's, it's, it's beautiful.
Yeah.
But, but this map itself, as shown there, doesn't show any, give you any information that's useful.
No.
It's an impractical map.
Okay. No one loves this map.
We need it, right. Okay.
Settlement patterns.
Settlement patterns.
Wanna see the map?
Along with a slope map.
No, I think that's.
That I buy, I like the slope map.
There's your flat spot.
Yeah, I know.
Look at, other one's on background.
I know. Flat. Thirteen percent of the town is flat. Most of it's on bog rain.
At the land use plan, planning course I took, um, they basically were like, when you go over twenty, like it's. You make sure it get out.
Yeah, yeah.
Um.
Yeah.
See, with that pie chart, or the other page is a pie chart, pie chart. Um, okay, that's, that's the chart I'm looking at, I have my notes on. There, um, the slope category. Hmm, numbers, the numbers need an explanation, definition of slope. And then, is what I wrote.
Is that the one before it?
So one before, that's one before.
Okay.
Go back, that, that one.
We have to define, because when you compare that pie chart to something else on the color code or one was in percent slope and the other was percent area, I believe. It was conflicting. It wasn't explained well, the difference between the two.
To the other side.
Two items. Maybe that, okay, okay, by category.
That shows the percentage.
Yeah.
Right.
Once. The other colors are very similar and they're showing.
Oh, you're saying versus.
Yeah, they don't.
Right, cuz they're all on the same page, I believe they're shown on the same page.
You don't lie.
Yeah.
So, so when you're looking at both of those, you look at the little blocks, the squares, rectangles, and then the pie chart, they're both saying percentage, but they're referring to a different percentage.
Right, this one says flats three percent, the other one says thirteen percent is flat.
Right, and it's like, one is percentage of town lands.
Right.
Land area, land area, and the other is three percent slope as you go down the grade, drive down the road.
The title, instead of slope cla- category, you would put.
Percent grade.
Percent grade.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then the other one, you should label that pie chart to say, you know, percent of area or.
Right, land area or something.
Yeah.
And then we just have a title anyways, that's a perfect opportunity to.
Right. Okay. Next page.
That one, I'm still, we're gonna do something with the wording of commercial, industrial, recreational.
Yeah, we talked about that and the answer was that each of those categories are really small.
Right.
And they would be pretty much indistinguishable on a pie graph.
So that's really easy to solve and you do the pullout with the line for those ones and it has the breakdowns, so you end up with two sets, so you would have to change the layout here, but I have this happen all the time when I'm evaluating performance and errors, um.
I do think you could combine commercial, industrials.
Right, right.
And then full recreation.
Because it was either recreational as a classic recreational or it was a commercial recreational and I couldn't tell what it was referring to.
Cuz this doesn't tell much of a story if you were to do the pullout of even anything under five percent. Right, then you would have, anything under five percent gets its own little story and or you could pull this whole section. Because we already know we're mostly residential, so you could say residential's eighty-three percent and then everything is. There's a lot of ways to do it.
Okay, we can work on that.
Then you can yell at Excel for making all your labels overlap.
Right.
Yeah.
I get the point of putting it together, but I think, you know, the recreational tied with it, just they don't fit together.
Right.
Um, same problem with this one, with the blocks. Um, some of those, just like, someone's gotta fact, uh, fact-check some of these blocks.
Are these ones that came from the? I don't even wanna say it aloud, that might. Yeah, please fact-check, yes, and then we would like to know where the data came from.
Yeah. Like on the backside of I eighty-nine places. Um, the reds. I'm not sure what the red is over there, and that green block, what is?
Yeah, you're right, what is the red block?
Commercial, industrial.
But it's not on the bottom, that's what I'm saying.
Up here, to here.
Right.
Current nineties.
So what are those blocks?
Right.
Oh, maybe it's the way it falls on the page.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, but it was, but it was just some of the blocks like, that's not there. What it's labeled as is just incorrect.
This is what I ran into on another document this town had, was that things simply just were not factually correct and I couldn't get any references. Um, I think on the table spanning two pages, something as simple as a very light gray underneath to make it pop, so it's clearly tabled together.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and I'm not saying it has to be that way, but just something.
Or a box around it.
Something that looks happy and makes other people happy. Happy little trees.
Yeah. Okay. Current zoning and build-out, I think the build-out part is gonna be axed.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I, I don't see us heading build out, right? Build-out is like your terminal point, is that how? I guess, what's the definition of build-out?
Uh, build-out is the maximum number of units under current zoning.
Okay, so that's the terminal point, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and the scatter dots on the map was all like useless to me, it was like, didn't really be, have any real meaning.
Are those houses?
They are structures.
Structures, yeah. Well, they're proposed, that's where a house could go.
No, I think that's.
That's, that's on the bill, it's on the build-out map and they're just scattered everywhere.
Right.
They're hard to see, for one, but when you do folk, get your eyes to focus on them, on the little, there's a little graph and it has little box.
Yeah.
It's probably on the other page.
Yeah.
Somewhere, it's somewhere in there.
That's map?
And so, quick look on the paper copy, I can show you where it was.
That one is the build-out and you said that was going away?
I think that's for.
Yeah.
Okay, it's on page forty, forty-five.
Yeah, the build-out.
Paper mail.
Um, that lady on the rail trails, probably, she's pretty cool, but I don't think she belongs in the build-out section. That's, I mean, I think, honestly, like somebody's, you know, inappropriate job of life, like we can't have the, call the devices on legs cows because at a hospital they have to be called wow. In print form, will you be able to see the dots and distinguish between the colors? I, I, I.
I suppose that depends on the resolution of your monitor.
No, I mean, print for, I said print for.
Print for.
I mean, I'm gonna zoom in, I don't.
I mean, I mean, if you can see it on, on this printout.
Yeah.
Which, my, my glasses on, I can.
Yeah, okay.
Um, I would presume that any printed version would have an equal amount of detail and resolution.
Yeah, it might have a little more depending on how you have it printed.
Yeah, yeah.
Cuz that has margins and they're not gonna use a printer that has margins, I would say.
I would agree that the, the red dots all over can't provide any substantive.
Right, cuz you needed access to them.
Yeah.
You got, you got super long driveway, so you get a lot of roads.
The potential gas, like you said, you divided it up by acreage and this start putting dots somewhere, they don't know if that's the building spot or not. And I, I think the colors portray the same thing, really.
I think the other thing we're setting ourselves up for is someone is gonna take this as the Bible truth.
Right. Who's building in my backyard?
They said someone can build a house.
Well, I can see that, someone opens this and says, wait a minute.
Yeah.
You know, the town's trying to do this.
Right.
And we're sending them all to your office.
I'm sending them around.
Flow down, see how that went?
Yeah, exactly, they're building two hundred houses between Shakey Hill Road and Shakey Boulevard.
Yeah, that's what we're trying to do.
Yeah.
That's what this map says.
Next year, right?
Right, exactly. Yeah, the town's trying to do this.
Yeah.
This is the plan.
We own all the land and, uh.
What did Sealy say about this? I'm serious, because this is, she, it has a very distinct interest in how we use our land and I think if she was upset, then that is probably going to be the tone of many people. Right?
Let, let me say that we are still working on revisions to the land use chapter.
Yeah.
Um, we did go over a lot of it on Monday. And we'll see how the revisions come out. And, um, I'm sure if Sealy is not happy with it, she will make that known.
Yeah, I don't think people are gonna take this as like a hypothetical if everything was built, even if that's what it kinda says.
Yeah.
Right, they're gonna take it more of a plan and.
I also think we need to, we haven't done the zoning yet, but if we were doing some aspirational thinking, we really should be focusing more dots and more density towards infrastructure that already exists, instead of putting them out in the middle of.
I could see that, maybe creating a map of a plan of more dense housing downtown than we have now.
Like, you take roads that are major arteries that have infrastructure in place and, because I think that's what you, if you're gonna be respons- and we're talking about honoring the environment and honoring our history, and that means not putting a house in every corner of town. But it's not in my backyard.
The plans.
Right, but.
Environmentally, no one should live out where I live anymore, right?
But a- a- again, this is a build-out map based on current zoning.
Right.
And it's, it's just saying potentially this is what could be done.
With the present zoning.
With the present zoning.
Right.
Over some undefined period of time.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, but that's.
You're gonna put more, you're gonna put more in the R-one district because you can put more.
Because you can.
District.
Right.
That's all it's.
So it, it, it's factually, it's correct, the question is, do we wanna present these particular facts?
Right.
Yeah, is it helpful to the narrative we're trying to build?
Right, and I, I think the, the way the discussion went is probably not helpful. So I think we're gonna see a change in this, agreed.
Right, 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 you know, look at it as a layperson, seeing this map for the first time, not really understanding what a master plan is also, and they're saying, oh my god, they wanna put houses all over town.
They don't know how to read a zoning map, they don't know any of that.
Right.
And this is what you're giving. Like, uh, some people, because they.
Right, they don't go.
You know, I think you'd be much better off to lose the map and have a little paragraph that's.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I, I thought Enfield ended at Potato Road until I was, um, thirty, basically. And I, it's not fair.
It ends in first of the way.
Yeah, so I think, you know, for somebody who just hasn't spent as much time on maps as us, it could be confusing.
Clearly, we need more signs. Enfield does not end here.
Yeah, it's for the substitute person when they're.
You can always tell when Kaden begins, like it's the dirt road.
That's true.
Or Crafton.
Yeah.
That's what my toll booth is for, so I can pay there, so I can get downtown to my small Paris for my coffee.
And it also shows you where you could make zoning changes.
Yeah.
Which is the next step to a master plan.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Moving along yet again, because it's after nine and I'm sure we have other. Things that we'd like to accomplish this evening.
And I'm old and.
Like going to bed. So perspectives and priorities, future land use. Um, broken down into planning areas.
Yeah.
And a short paragraph on each one.
Yeah.
And finally, some recommendations after all of them.
I have comments on your map.
Go ahead.
Of course I do.
I can take it for a. Throw it at me.
I have some, on subsections H, I, and maybe F. Um, I think there needs to be broken down into further subsections, or at least labeled as. Um, by broad neighborhoods type of things. Because the way it's currently is, it's all, my fear, well, basically, my fear is that when the planning board does get. Starts sitting down and rewriting the zoning regs itself. It's going to just see R one residential, uh, residential and writes one. Chapter for all, everything that, that's on that map is residential. And not think about subsections of town having different residential, but different requirements. And a classic one would be Main Street. Main, I think Main Street should have its own. Regul- regulations for that one area of town. That are different than residential on Lock Haven or Shakey Hill Road or. Some of the other areas. And then as you get further out of town, the perimeter of town, it should be different regularly. Regu- regulations for say Bard Road or George Hill Road or the upper section of Lock Haven. Um, I just feel that if it, if it's labeled on the map as. Residential A, residential B, then it would be something that would be at least considered. It may not happen, but at least be there for someone to say, oh, what about this?
So is this another case of the five thousand foot view? You can't get that amount of detail and adding. Several subsections would make the map harder for people to understand. Asking a question.
Um, I think that would be a five thousand foot view, because it would just be blocks of areas. Say, on the I's, the one that's in the, is it I in the middle there?
I.
So you just do your major roads or type of as a section, so. Um, everything from the intersection of Shakey Hill Roads. And where the break is at Lock Haven would be, you'd say, one letter. And then the opposite side of Shakey Hill Road could be another letter. And then where the I is, you know, a letter. And then, as you get further away, I just think. I'm going to have to sit down and study the map a bit more before I would start putting letters on there. I mean, I'd be willing to do that. And present it and say, what do you guys think?
I would love it if you would do that.
Okay, and I would, basically, I would just be using natural barriers, either on existing roads, rivers, things like that. To define subsections.
Rob, is, is this the map that we were talking about, um. Limiting some of these residential areas to within X number of feet of existing roads, or is that a different map? I remember we had a discussion about it on Monday.
This one just labeling current areas that exist?
Yeah. But this is future.
Well, but can you bring it down a little? That section, I.
Yeah.
I wouldn't see any difference in regulations in that block.
I was going to say, I think we're getting to the point where we're trying to decide what those regulations are going to be.
We're making a zone.
That's outside the.
Well, my concern is, that's only half of the map. Show the other half of the map, because that I color. Goes in other areas that I think should be.
Well, I think that's just the thing. You think that it should be this way and someone else thinks it should be this way. And I don't think the master plan should be saying, this is how we're going to develop.
And I think that, I mean, yeah, I think that I block is a block that. It says, okay, this is the central part of town.
But there was the gray then. Well, you calling that all sense, all around Crystal. I mean, that's my concern. I mean, that's pretty closely just what's, uh, three right now. And I think it's. See, it's the other half of the map that also has that same color as I, and I think should have its, uh. More defined, a different definition, different regs written for it.
But we're not talking about writing regs here on this.
Yeah, but.
We're, 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 we're talking about the most desirable use.
Right.
Of the land as we go forward. And, you know, I, I think, given the. Um. Intertwining of planning board and master planning task force. The scenario that you first envisioned, where a planning board looks at this. And says, well, we should regulate H the same as we regulate I. I, I, I don't see that happening.
No, no, not, not H to Y. It's just the, the area that I is covering. I think it's too broad for all one set of regulations.
Is, can you show me the key again, please? I know I could go down here.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Um, so residential.
Yeah.
And that's just a general residential, like people live in that area, but there could be different parts to it.
Yeah, I agree. I think this is, this is that high level view that this whole area, everything in town that's residential should be the same.
Yeah, I mean, generally speaking.
I get your point. When you get to developing regulations, you're going to have to break that down into different subsections.
It could still be in a. It could still be in an R three district, but it could still be a residential.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Um, just that, I saw it earlier and I, I remember seeing it before. The way this addresses, the language in which this addresses. Limiting lakefront development. Not my favorite, I'm trying to remember where it was. I think instead of, was the word restriction, maybe? I would love to say it's, um, from a more positive side, which is to protect the existing open space. Because they're not making more lakefront, but they specifically, the lakes are largely built out. And so the desire would be to protect the existing open space and not focus so much on the restriction. Because that, to me, that also speaks to like, Enfield owns the end of Johnston Drive.
Right.
Do we want to see it full properly? They're not making new lakefronts. I guess I'm. Just a different tactic.
I agree with that.
Okay, yeah.
I like that. I've seen a lot of zoning that's written negative and I, I like to write it from the positive.
Because we, we want to protect our lake, but we don't need to tell people that because they know that's desirable. Either they're going to dump it or whatever.
All right.
General, um, overarching comment, use of air quotes. I'm a big fan of air quotes for like texting and my general life. But just being really careful about using air quotes, um, as definition words. I don't know how that works in this kind of technical writing, like in legal writing, you define the word in quotes the first time and then you capitalize it or call it out. Um, I just, I've seen the single air quotes and the double air quotes throughout. And so picking, is, is it a valid reason to give it air quotes? Right? Because if you really truly believe it's a definition or should be understood, you probably don't need to put it in quotes. It's kind of like. Using parentheses for no reason. If it's good enough to be in a sentence, it shouldn't be inside parentheses. Just a general stylistic error. Or maybe that becomes something that is one of the definitions you can click on when it's a virtual document. I'm not opposed to calling it a business, about how and why we've chosen to do it. How's that?
A weird perspective.
I would put it from a weird perspective.
Okay.
You could see the, uh, it was, I said it was seven different reasons to build this thing.
Yeah.
It's like patchwork, you see different styles.
Yeah.
It's part of what makes it so cool.
And again, I assume that we want to prioritize the recommendations.
I might, but point five one's great.
Good luck on that.
Right, but it's a.
No, I don't. Good luck prioritizing all of these.
Yeah, I know.
Like I said, everybody's going to have a different.
Oh, I know, I know.
Five, six.
Yeah.
Is already recommendation in transportation, I think.
Yeah.
Um.
I would agree with that. I mean, I don't.
I'm not saying it can't be, I'm just.
I would just make that comment to double check, because it's one of the things that drove me nuts in Claremont's master plan. Was it was very repetitive with the same goals in different places.
And this is why we.
Put it somewhere, you should put it in the priority chapter and not in multiple chapters.
Oh, yeah, the redundancy check, like all of them recommendations side by side.
Yeah, make sure we don't have the same one or a very similar one in the next chapter.
I thi- I think, um, when we get to doing the implementation chapter. All of these recommendations will be consolidated and associated with a timeline.
Yeah.
And a responsible person, organization, department, whatever.
Yeah, no, that would be good. Like I talked to you though, as we move forward. I'd like to work with the select board on a strategic plan that ties to this and then use the budget document to say. We added this in the budget and it.
Mm-hmm.
It, it hits recommendation five one of the master plan.
And I repeatedly, in meetings, when people have their projects that they would love to do. I, I repeatedly ask, like, is this within what our strategy was? Does it align with our goals? Like, there are things that are very nice to do. But we, this is what we need to be doing.
Yeah, this is going to drive everything.
Yeah, yeah, and we haven't had one of these in decades.
But even when we had goals, we chose to ignore them in favor of doing projects that people wanted to do. And I, I think if it's not a goal, you have to ask yourself, is this something I personally want? It's like, even if it's super nice, right?
Right.
Because you're using town resources and you need to respect the tax dollars and the time that it takes to do that.
That's what I've always told people.
If you don't like the law, change the law.
Well, it's not that you can't do something outside the plan, but you need to have that strong conversation of whether it's.
Exactly, because it is outside the plan.
Yes.
And, you know, the plan can be changed. If, you know, if a majority of people want to change, you know, lakefront property or whatever. Or complete streets, then that can be something that the voters can decide on through. Tax dollars. Appropriation. Um. But, you know, to have this kind of a overall. Twenty thousand foot view of where the town wants to go. Is a really good way to. To get there, wherever there happens to be.
Yeah.
Which is why we're doing it. I think it's a nice document.
Mm-hmm.
I think they did a great job.
Thank you.
We're getting there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I think the conversations and being open to constructive criticism and ideas. Because you guys really work great together. I mean, I enjoy hearing things that I didn't think about. Um.
Mm-hmm.
This is going to be a good document.
Yeah. Well.
It's not going to sit on a shelf.
That was, our goal was to have a living document that at least there's consensus. Amongst the interested people in town. And we have some sort of a common direction that we're heading in.
Right.
On several different fronts. Which, you know, that's a new concept for a lot of people in town.
Nobody's going to like it all.
Of course not.
But nobody has a veto, no individual has a veto over it either.
Mm-hmm.
So if there's an individual that doesn't like something, I'm sorry, but it is a consensus document.
Right.
It has been good discussions.
Yeah.
I've enjoyed listening to them.
We've had lots of really, really good discussions with, within the task force. And with the people who have taken the time to get interested. And our next step after town meeting, once we get the first draft, uh, locked down. Is put it on the website, publicize it widely. Make paper copies available if we have to, and then have a large, uh. Public input or public comment meeting. Hopefully that will happen in May, late May. But at this point, you know, we're just not really ready to set a date. Until we have a good, finished, polished product. That's where we are. And then we're going to take a break over the summer.
Yeah.
And then in the fall, we're going to start up and we're going to hit some of the chapters that have. Standing committees in town, because they've already done an awful lot of legwork, energy. Um.
Historic.
Historic and, uh. Recreation. And facilities.
I was wondering, um, just in the vein of burning out volunteers. And it may be that I'm very enthusiastic and the break will reinvigorate them, but are you planning on trying to continue with the same group? And do you feel like that would be, it would be, I want to honor whether it's like, because when we started this, I don't think everybody knew we were going to be in the middle of a pandemic for this long. And so, you know, I, I just, I want to honor the fact that they have committed a substantial amount of time in a pretty difficult environment. Um, and so just getting a sense from them, like, do they want to continue, I guess? Because this would be a natural break if somebody felt that they had something that they needed to be doing, or if they want to join another committee, we'll sign them up.
Yeah, I mean, we, we've lost, um. I think two people through attrition, one way or another. And we need to bring in, uh, new bodies to replace the two that either have left. Or appear to have left, or I, I'm assuming that once Eric becomes a select board member, he probably will not have time for this. But I don't know that for a fact.
He continues to amaze me.
I know. He.
I'm not going to.
He has a lot of energy. It's incredible. Um. I, I, I sort of broached that question with the task force members and said, think about it. Um. And when we get towards the end of this first. Set of chapters, I think we'll have a series. set of chapters, I think we'll have a serious discussion about who would like to continue. Should we add more people? Is, you know, is, is the number that we have a good working number? Or should we shrink down or expand? And just kinda poll people and see what their interest is.
And also, if they fell in love with a portion of this process or a topic, could we continue, you know, to include them so that their involvement doesn't end when this ends, you know?
Yeah.
I think some of what we've been trying to do as a town, and I think it's very important, is we've been trying to pass some of this knowledge that is institutional knowledge and work, you know, project-related, um, onto some of these committees and elevate people who can contribute, so.
And you may find people who have an interest in the new chapters.
The.
As new members.
Yeah.
I think recreation in particular.
Right. Yeah.
Well, and historic.
I think the focus groups actually found us some really new, new people. I was really excited to, um, I think one person that you found us was Amy, Amy Seward, no relation to you, right?
No, but she taught my daughter in school, and we're both Ms. Stewart.
And she's on the rec committee now?
She's, she is, and some of what we have to do in these meetings, when we see someone who is right there and down, I had everybody down. I'll ask anybody, you know, I sit there during meetings.
You carry a piece of rope, too, don't you, with you? Pull them right in.
We have some part-time residents, too, who've been coming to some of these online ones that you guys have done. And I asked them, and they're like, well, I'm not here full-time yet, but I, I'm not really from there originally, but would you take me out of committee? And the answer, of course.
Of course. Even, even if you're living in Arizona, you can zoom in.
Right.
Until you get here full-time.
Yeah.
For the summer, whatever. You know, COVID has opened up a lot of new avenues for, for town government.
Yeah, we've got some cool people here.
And they're, they're ready and willing and able to participate, which is dynamic.
You have a talent set height, Kate, we'll stop you.
Okay, folks, we're, um,
I'm a weird.
Kinda late, nine, nine thirty-two, give or take. Uh, unless there's any new business.
We really gotta get serious about filling some positions. Hey, Linda.
I, I think, I think we are in fairly reasonable shape.
Okay.
Uh, Jeff, what was his name, the forester?
Connie.
Card, Cardy?
Connie.
Yeah. He has expressed interest in joining the planning board.
So is Tim Jennings.
And Tim Jennings has.
Yeah.
So I think, I think that those two, um.
Ashley, Ashley Woods.
And Ashley, so we.
From alternate.
Have they filled out the form?
No, Tim has, we need to reel them in.
Can you, can you follow up, Rob?
Send them the form and be like, please complete and return this to Elisa and see if she knew, so I know it's done.
Yes.
Can you tell how I do that?
Tim told me he had, so.
What about Reed Burgwell?
I haven't heard anything from him.
No, I'm just thinking, he comes religiously to coffee, he does all of these big projects.
Yeah.
I, I tend to think that his plate is full.
Yeah, but he's, maybe his plate will get smaller and he'll wanna hang with us.
He's really, he's really good.
Excellent.
I'll make a motion to adjourn then.
I know.
Okay.
Seeing as how many people.
All right, all in favor of adjourn?
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned at, uh, whatever time. Nine thirty-four.
I'll be back in six weeks. Bye, Linda.
That's fine.
See you. Here for the second.